I will call the October meeting of the Suffolk City Planning Commission to order. I will call on Commissioner Emile Staylor for the invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather here today for our October Planning Commission meeting, we ask you to bless these commissioners by giving us the wisdom to make the correct decisions for the citizens of our city. We ask that you also bless and keep safe the many public safety and other staff members of our city, and bless the members of the armed services and keep them safe. Our city, state, and federal government are faced with many troubling issues, including the COVID-19 plague, and we ask you to give them the strength to make the right decisions for our great country. Amen.
Hanley, if you'll call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Present.
Commissioner Creakmore?
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Here.
Commissioner Edwards?
Present.
Commissioner Hicks?
Here.
Commissioner Rector?
Here.
Mr. Singleton?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, all members present, you do have a quorum.
A quorum, thank you for that. Are there any corrections to the minutes of the September meeting? If not, those minutes will stand approved as presented. Public hearings. Public hearings are 30 minutes in length. 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for opposition to speak, 5 minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. Our first public hearing this afternoon is conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-016, helipad for Bon Secours Harborview Hospital. Mr. Hanley, if you'll present the caption, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this request was submitted by Randy Royal of Kimbley Horn Associates, applicant on behalf of Dan McCarthy, Vice President of Bon Secours Mercy Health, property owner in accordance with Sections 31-306 and 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a heliport on property located at 7250 Harbor Town Parkway, zoning map six, parcel three A, star two, C, star four. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nan'sman Voting Borough, Zoned MUD, Mixed Use Development. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act upon this request, you act upon a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-016. Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. At this time, I recognize our staff planner, Ms. Thurston.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this conditional use permit application requests to allow a helipad in conjunction with a proposed hospital facility that's proposed at 7250 Harbor Town Parkway. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this property as being located within the Mixed Use Core Use District of the Northern Growth Area. The property is located west of I-664 and north of Bridge Road in the Harborview Station Master Plan Development. The subject parcel shown above is Zoned MUD, Mixed Use Development Overlay District. The surrounding zoning consists of B2 General Commercial to the north, where you have the movie theater and various restaurants and retail establishments. To the west and south, you have the same MUD overlay zone in which the subject property is located, and the properties immediately to the south and west were both developed as multifamily apartments. The development to the west is so recent that the aerial above does not depict the structures that have been built out there. And then lastly, as I mentioned, to the east of the site, you have I-664, which is Zoned B2 General Commercial. The subject property was one of many parcels that were conditionally rezoned back in 2006 in order to create the overall Harborview Station Master Plan Development. Subsequently, in 2012, a proffer amendment was submitted for this overall development that has no bearing on today's application. The original proffers did include a set of design guidelines for the development, which I will elaborate on as I move through the presentation. Here you have a conceptual site plan for this project that depicts the helipad as being located behind the proposed hospital building and parking areas in the northeastern corner of the property. So, the applicant decided to locate the helipad in this area in order to minimize visibility and impacts to nearby residential uses. The property consists of a total of about 19 acres, and the helipad itself would be roughly 100 or so feet by 100 feet, or approximately a quarter of an acre in size. The helipad is proposed to be available 24 hours a day throughout the entire year in order to accommodate all emergencies. Staff has reviewed this application in accordance with the approval criteria for conditional use permits as outlined in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance, and we have found that this request is consistent with those requirements. Some of our key findings are as follows. The helipad is expected to conform to the character of the Harborview Station Mixed Use Development as this area is comprised of many medical uses, and the helipad is positioned on the site so as to minimize impacts to nearby properties. The helipad is not expected to be injurious to persons living in, working in, or driving through the area. The noise associated with landings and takeoffs is expected to be brief and infrequent. The overall public benefit of the enhanced emergency care as a result of having the helipad is anticipated to outweigh short-term impacts. The city's traffic engineer, our fire department, as well as the Departments of Public Utilities and Public Works have reviewed the application and expressed no concerns with a helipad at this particular location. The applicant will be required to obtain any necessary permits and approvals from the Federal Aviation Administration and the Virginia Department of Aviation, and those are both separate processes that take place separately from the local City of Suffolk CUP process. The helipad should not diminish or impair surrounding property values or impede orderly development of this area, as the Harborview Station Design Guidelines that were originally adopted for the area envisioned uses such as this in this area. In summary, the proposed helipad is determined to be appropriate for this location. Therefore, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit, CUP 2020-16, with the conditions that are noted in your staff report. And I will just point out that condition number two states that the helipad would be constructed in the northeastern quadrant of the property, which is shown above in yellow. They may make some deviations to that a little bit during the site plan review process. However, overall, we would like for it to stay in that area, and that's why that condition is noted in your staff report. And then condition number three states that the applicant would comply with the FAA and DOA permitting requirements, and they would be responsible for obtaining those. That concludes my information. I'll stand by after the public hearing for any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thurston. Officer Jackson, is there anyone outside of chambers that would like to participate in this public hearing? Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
I'm trying not to touch the podium here. Good afternoon, Chairman Benton, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Randy Royal. I'm a civil engineer with Kimbley Horn and Associates, business address 4525 Main Street, Virginia Beach, and I'm here representing the Bon Secours on this application. Amy gave you a pretty good background. It's a 142,000-square-foot hospital on a 19-acre site. This is an accessory use to it for emergencies. The intended air ambulance service will be for patients primarily that need to be transferred to other locations. We expect air traffic and landings to be brief and infrequent, likely only a handful a year. It's not something that's going to be happening all the time. We do understand we need to get the necessary permits and regulations. FAA doesn't actually issue a permit. They issue a thing called a determination letter where they make sure that you don't have any problems with the airspace, and they give us lots of regulations as far as clear space, our approaches, and I don't have a pointer here, but if you're going to ask, they're not going to come in from the highway side, which is at the bottom of the picture that's up there now. They have to have two angles of approach. One is kind of across the pond, the other is across the back of the parking lot. That minimizes any problems with trees and also in looking at the residents there, such that we don't cause them an issue. There's a thing called a notice of landing area, and we'll provide as much of this to staff as they'd like to see, but we know we need to get the appropriate permissions from everybody to get this approved. Amy stole my thunder on most of this with the staff report. There's nominal impacts to the residents. We have sent letters out. Staff sends out letters to the adjoiningers notifying them of a public hearing. We have sent out a letter. We've given the information of Bon Secours if they had anything they wanted to ask about. We provided that map there to show them where the helipad would be. We have not heard back from anybody. So again, we think it's a good use. It's a necessary use for a hospital as infrequent as it is. Staff has recommended approval. We hope you'll see fit to do the same to council, and I'll stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Royal. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? No one else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If there is no one who would like to speak in opposition, Mr. Royal, would you like to make any additional comments on behalf of the application?
No, sir. I'll just stand by for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question of Amy. Amy? In your comments, you mentioned that one of the conditions was number two, that the helipad shall be constructed in northeastern corner of the property shown on the attached Exhibit Schedule C. Since this has to be approved by the aviation, Federal Aviation Administration and others, and could possibly be required to be moved from that particular location one way or the other, aren't we somewhat restricting what they can do in the event that it doesn't go on this site, this location? Would it have to come back before the Planning Commission if it was moved to a different location on that site, and maybe to City Council as well?
Sure, I understand your question completely. So, we included that condition because, as you know, there are residences to the south and west, and so we were most comfortable with the helipad being located in this general vicinity of this northeastern corner of the property, which on this screen is, you know, kind of to the southeast. But as long as the FAA comes back with just slight adjustments, you know, with this site being 19 acres, if it shifts, you know, 100 feet in either direction, if you will, it still would comply with that condition of that portion of the property, that kind of general quadrant, if you will. And I believe that the applicant and their entire team is fairly confident about the placement of it. We have reviewed, the site plan has been through one review already, and I'm not anticipating it shifting dramatically. However, if the FAA and the DOA do want to see something completely differently, then we would bring it back before you if we need to amend that condition.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Ms. Thurston linger at the podium for just a moment while I see if any other commissioner has a question to her. Thank you, Ms. Thurston. Again, we've had the public hearing. To the commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, from having had a family member that needed to be flown via air ambulance from a smaller medical facility like this to a major medical facility and having flatlined twice on the ride, I'm going to wholeheartedly and full-throatedly support this conditional use permit. It's a very necessary and very needed thing for hospitals these days, and as such, I'll turn that into a motion to approve this conditional use permit with the conditions.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Rector with the conditions. Second from Commissioner Hicks. Motion and second for approval. Discussion of the motion. Motion and second for approval. Mr. Hanley, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Creakmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Rector?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Staylor?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it passes eight to zero.
Congratulations, and it will go to City Council with a recommendation for approval on November 18.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing this afternoon is conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-017, 3219 Bridge Road. Mr. Hanley, if you'll present the caption, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this request was submitted by Lorenzo J. Mallory, Senior of Greater Dimensions Kingdom Ministries, applicant on behalf of S. Chris Jones, BCP LLC, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31-306 and 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit request to establish a place of worship, small, under 6,000 square feet, in the main sanctuary on property located at 3219 Bridge Road, zoning map 12, parcel 12J. The affected area is further identified as being located in Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, Zoned B2 General Commercial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. When you act upon this request, you're acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2020-017. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, I recognize staff planner, Ms. Wong.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a conditional use permit to establish a place of worship, small, under 6,000 square feet in main sanctuary, in an existing building space located at 3219 Bridge Road. The property is part of the Northern Growth Area Suburban Use District. This property is part of a larger shopping center complex located at the intersection of Bridge Road and Lee Farm Lane, Zoned B2 General Commercial Zoning District. The property is surrounded by commercial buildings and residential developments, Zoned B2 RL and RU. Since the property is a unit within an existing shopping center and requires no land disturbance, the Department of Public Works has no concerns. Similarly, the Department of Public Utilities has no concerns since property is already served by city water and sewer. The applicant proposes to use the existing building space as a place of worship, with the main sanctuary being 2,075 square feet, to hold a max of 50 non-permanent pew chairs for a total of 30 members of the church. The applicant is proposing to utilize a sanctuary, pastor study, bathroom, classroom, office space, and kitchen. Kitchen usage and food preparation would be restricted to church members only, according to the Health Department regulations. The proposed hours of operation are Sundays, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for services, and Wednesdays, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for Bible study. Lastly, parking requirements outlined in the Unified Development Ordinance require a minimum of one parking space per four seats and a maximum of one space per one and a half seats for a religious assembly. The shopping center contains enough off-street parking to satisfy the requirements, with 36 parking spaces and one designated handicap space on the property. Additionally, there are 177 parking spaces belonging to the Food Lion Shopping Center. Therefore, there is adequate parking for the proposed use. Staff has closely reviewed the request to determine its compatibility with the criteria outlined in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance as it pertains to requested additional conditional use permits. After review, staff finds that the proposed use meets the criteria outlined in the UDO and that the use would not negatively impact the surrounding area. Accordingly, staff recommends approval for CUP 2020-617 with the conditions as noted in the attached resolution and ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wong. At this time, we will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak on behalf of this application? And before we do, again, Officer Jackson, is there anyone outside who would like to participate?
[inaudible]
Thank you. All right, we will now open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I didn't hear if I was on. Good evening, I mean, good afternoon to you. Pleasure to be here. I want to thank staff for their wonderful job in helping us to this point. They've done a wonderful job, I think, outlining what's going to occur on the site. As most of you probably know, this was a former site of Bennett's Creek Pharmacy, which my wife and I operated for almost 34 years in the city. The last 24 were at that location. It's a less intense use, I think, than the pharmacy, and we were very particular in who we wanted to lease this property to. We had several individuals who would like to have leased it, but the church came along about four or five months ago. They are currently in the city on the other end of Bridge Road, up on the Isle of Wight County Suffolk Line on Bridge Road, and they are a wonderful family. They have a good leadership, and we're very pleased to have them as a potential tenant for this site. They are here if you would like to hear from them. Pastor Mallory and his wife, if you'd stand. Both of them are pastors in the church, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have. I would note that the shopping center owners and Food Lion are in support of this application, and it is 3,890 square feet. And I, again, would like to just thank staff for their assistance throughout this process. We weren't aware we had to have a use permit until after we had first talked to the church, and they were extremely helpful in navigating, helping us navigate this process, and they are testament to the city. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have after anyone who would like to speak in opposition.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application?
Good afternoon, Suffolk Planning Commission. We're honored to be here. We've been in the city for some time now, worshipping at the, as he, Mr. Jones spoke about, in the Carrollton area. We've been there approximately six years, and we had a need for a larger space after pleading our tenants in there where we were, and so that was the reason why we had this, Mr. Jones, to issue, to put forth this conditional use permit so that we could have a larger space for our members. Our membership is small and under 6,000 square feet in the main sanctuary on the property located there, so we're looking forward to having an opportunity to advance our religious worship services with your help. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mallory. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of this application? If not, is there anyone present who would like to speak in opposition? If not, would either one of you like to make any additional comments on behalf of this application?
Yes, sir.
If not, we will now close the public hearing. I turn to the commissioners for questions, comments, or a motion.
The Chair. I'd like to make a motion for CUP 2020-017 for approval with the four conditions.
Motion for approval from Commissioner Singleton with the conditions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
From Commissioner, all right, Kittrell. Kittrell. Eberwine. I knew somebody who has a last name. Mr. Edwards, I used to get tangled up with your name. And Mr. Eberwine and I spoke about that. All right, motion and second for approval. Discussion of the motion. Motion and second for approval. Mr. Hanley, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Commissioner Creakmore?
Yes.
Mr. Eberwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Rector?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Staylor?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, it passes unanimously, eight to zero.
Congratulations, and this will go to City Council on November 18 with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you very much. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. Our next public hearing is ordinance text amendment, OTA 2020-001. Mr. Hanley, if you'll present the caption, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, this text amendment was initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31 Unified Development Ordinance, Article 4, zoning, Sections 31-412, special corridor overlay districts, the SCOD, Section 31-419, mixed use development overlay district, MUD, and Article 6, design standard and improvement standards, Sections 31-603, landscaping standards, and Article 7 supplemental use regulations, Sections 31-707, home occupation, Section 31-714 sign regulations, and Section 31-717 temporary uses, and Appendix A definitions. The purpose of the text amendments is to update and refine the Code of the City of Suffolk, Chapter 31 Unified Development Ordinance due to change in circumstance. When you act upon this request, you act upon a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to ordinance text amendment, OTA 2020-001. There's a typo potentially on your agenda, so it's 001.
Thank you, Mr. Hanley. At this time, I recognize staff planner, Ms. Baker.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. I am, of course, here today to present on amendments pertaining to the sign regulations. Also want to recognize several members of staff that are in the audience that have assisted with the development of these amendments. They will also be available for questions at the end of the public hearing. To step back a little bit, the reason why that we have to update our sign regulations is due to a ruling by the Supreme Court in July 2015. The name of that Supreme Court decision was Reed versus Town of Gilbert. This Reed decision involved a pastor named Clyde Reed who sued the Town of Gilbert, Arizona, on the basis of the town giving limits to his temporary directional signs. Supreme Court ruled that, therefore ruled that localities cannot regulate signs based on content. However, we can still, we can still regulate it based on size, location, movability, lighting, as well as dimensions, height, and location. So what we have done is we analyzed our current sign regulations to make it content neutral. So we're moving towards regulating signage by type and location. And to note, we tried as much as we could to stay true to the current regulations while making clarifications or looking at maybe specific regulations that could be a little less strict. So, Article 7 is the portion of the Unified Development Ordinance that regulates signs. Currently, the UDO sign does look at sign types by their anticipated content. So examples of that are like political signs, real estate signs, things like that. So staff had to go through, and we had to revamp Appendix A of the definitions to remove any unnecessary references. Six total sections, as Mr. Hanley read out, were updated. The biggest one was actually 31-714, which is the section that's related to the sign regulations. Again, our intent is to stay true to most of our current regulations while bringing our, while bringing the regulations into compliance with the Reed decision. So, again, what we're looking at is we are regulating signage. We can look at setbacks, heights, but we are trying to correct any regulations that may have been identified as too restrictive. I think one of the most difficult sections was the temporary sign sections because temporary sign sections tend to look at content. You may recognize this chart from the staff report. It's kind of an abbreviated version of it. But we highlighted several sign types, construction signs, future site signs, political signs, and rental real estate signs. And if you look at it, a construction sign is now a sign located on development and construction site, as is a future site sign. Political sign falls under several temporary sign types, which are yard and banner signs. sign falls under several temporary sign types, which are yard and banner signs. And the rental real estate sign are signs located on property for sale or rent. So the reason you see kind of a longer name for the construction sign, the future site sign, and the rental real estate sign is because we're focusing on the location, not what's actually on the sign. So, kind of going to go quickly, section by section. If there's not a lot of changes, we can just kind of roll on through it. But this is actions not requiring a permit. We largely, again, here stayed true to what was in the current regulations, with the exception that temporary signs do not require a permit. Same here. So there was a definition for billboards added for signs that are two-hundred-and-fifty square feet or more, but that was added as a clarification. We have never permitted billboards or signs over two-hundred-and-fifty square feet in Suffolk. Again, prohibited signs, these issues stay true to the current regulations, including signs not being permitted in the right-of-way, for example. This is a new, some new content that we added. We added some drawings to assist with looking at the sign area and height. So this is, this is also mirrors our current regulations. We did add a clarification about permanent signs only on improved properties. And again, they were never permitted on unimproved properties, but it was just to be a clarification. In this subsection, we organized all the previous sections that looked at signs by zoning district into a table. So now we can kind of look at a one-stop shop for permanent signs for all uses, and then you can look at it by non-residential uses. This section, too, is largely the same, but we did, we did make some clarifications on the electronic message board. It was previously messages could change every sixty minutes. Now they're allowed every sixty seconds. Additionally, some requirements were added about illumination and about how the sign relates to ambient conditions. The roof signs and the fifteen feet for freestanding signs for shopping centers, office parks, or similar groups is in the current regulations. We did add this new subsection for the mixed-use overlay district. Largely, the mixed-use overlay district follows the sign regulations for the Village Center and for the Central Business District zoning. But with, with the idea of assisting development along limited or restricted access highways, staff work with economic development. We also researched signs in Hampton, such as the power plant and the Peninsula Town Center, to kind of come up with an idea for this. So what we have for this is a forty-five-foot-tall and four-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot sign allowed in the MUD. But there are additional regulations, such as it has to be on a fifty-acre master plant development with two-thousand-liner feet of frontage on a limited or restricted access highway. It also has to be located ten to fifty feet outside the highway right-of-way. Additionally, there can be no less than a half-mile between other monument signs permitted under this subsection. Next, this stayed largely the same. It's just, it's a change in name only. Rather than calling them drive aisle signs, they were called directory signs. Again, that's trying to get away from content. This, again, supplemental sign regulations for office commerce or industrial parks stays the same. Again, rather than calling it identification signs, we're calling them entrance signs. So this subsection is new. It's a supplemental sign regulations for signs located on culturally significant property. Culturally significant property is defined as property that is declared culturally, environmentally, or historically significant by the city, the state, or the federal government. So it's not just for any property owner. So with that, they could get three additional signs. The signs could be four feet in height and seven square feet, and they should be directed towards pedestrians or vehicles on-site. I think a good example of signs, they're called interpretive signs. Again, we can't call them interpretive signs. But a good example is from, is in front of Riddick's Folly's House, Riddick Folly House, which has a Civil War sign. So it's one of those short signs that are kind of angled to you. You also kind of see them at, maybe in parks or on trails. Again, section is very similar to what we have in the existing regulations. Again, it could just be some of the signs are called something else, but it does resemble the current regulations. This is, you know how we were talking about how we tried to look at things that may have been a little too restrictive? And this is what we found in the window signs. So the ten percent window area allowance has been changed to permit twenty-five percent covered in most districts. And some other zoning districts, it is allowed up to forty percent provided that the window signs are transparent or letters-only. Again, just like in the permanent sign section, we also arrange the temporary sign section similarly by, by looking at the sign type rather than looking at section by section by the zoning district. So again, we have all uses, and we have non-residential uses. And as mentioned, no permit's going to be required, and they're not allowed in the, in the right-of-way, and they can't be internally or externally illuminated. And residential uses can't have more than two yard signs at any given time. So unless otherwise stated in the temporary sign section, ninety days are allowed for the temporary sign, and that is actually an increase from sixty days. Signs located on property for sale or rent must be removed within ten days of the property no longer available for rent. And signs located on development and construction sites must be removed within ten days of the last certificate of occupancy issued or an erection of a permanent sign. This is very similar to our current regulations as well. One of the things that we did update is in certain areas in commercial or business districts, there is, these signs are limited up to six times per year for each temporary sign, not to exceed twenty days. This replaces what we have in the current regulations that are called special event signs. Special event signs were permitted signs that were allowed three times a year, up to thirty days each. And also, we did add some allowances for A-frame signs, and those are signs that, also called sandwich board signs. And they do not have a time duration, provided that they don't obstruct the sidewalk, and they're taken, they're taken inside during, when businesses are closed or during, during weather events. We also discussed banners. Banners, of course, not allowed to obstruct windows, and they are allowed on the building facade up to thirty-two square feet. The Central Business District does have additional allowances, up to twenty percent of the building facade area. We also do have some information in the subsection, temporary sign subsection, that does allow some ground-mounted signs up to thirty-two square feet, which does become part of the sign, the banner sign allowance. Next, we have non-conforming signs. And to note, a non-conforming sign and an illegal sign are not the same thing. An illegal sign is, was not permitted under any ordinance, whereas a non-conforming sign was permitted under a previous ordinance and is lawfully there. So this has stayed the same. A non-conforming sign can't be enlarged. If it's fifty percent, less than fifty percent damaged, it can be restored within two years. If it's more than, it has to come into full compliance. This is the last section to review in the, in our sign regulations. And this is about sign construction, maintenance, and removal. It, again, is the same. It does discuss where if a permanent, where a permanent sign is, and the activity is no longer, the activity use or business has ceased, a blank has to put within sixty days. If the sign is abandoned, within two years, if an abandoned sign structure has not been accessory to an activity, use, or business, it must be removed within two years. So with that said, the next anticipated public hearing date is City Council, which is November eighteenth, 2020. And with that, I conclude my presentation, and I, our members of staff, will stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. I do believe that typically we have a public hearing and then the questions that follow that. So at this time, I will now open the public hearing. And Officer Jackson, is there anyone outside who would like to participate? Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone present who would like to speak on behalf of this ordinance text amendment? If not, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition? If there is no one who would like to speak publicly in favor of or in opposition to this ordinance text amendment, we will now close the public hearing. I now turn to the Planning Commission for questions, comments, or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, over here, this zip code. I just have a quick, general question. Is farming considered a home occupation? I mean, if the farmer operates his business out of his house?
No, sir, it's a business.
Sir?
It's a business. In, in the UDO, it defines what a home occupation is. It would say if you...
I mean, if it's not defined as a home occupation, then that's, that's going to negate my next few questions.
I was trying to think of one off the top of my head.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question as well. On, when I was reading through all thirty-some pages of this, I was thinking, you know, in the olden days, there'd just been a couple of bullet points that would cover something like this. So I guess in the technological age and, and all of the requirements, we got to go this way. I do have a question on page three, under limitation, no, under sign design standards, right at the top, under E, it says sign package, right at the top of page three.
Would you like for me to invite Ms. Baker to come back to the...
Maybe so. This is kind of a general question, so that, that might be fine. We see how, in, in the opening sentence, I'll let her get that before her. Page three, section E, under sign design.
Mr. Terrell, I may be able to address that.
All right, that's what I was thinking, possibly. If you read that, it says sign package.
Yes.
And then it says, prior to the erection of any sign.
Yes.
So if, for example, a political sign, which is a sign...
That's a temporary sign. Temporary sign does not require permit. Go, if you consider like the hospital you just saw.
Right, right. Well, well, my question was, if this wasn't conflicting with that, because it says any sign. It doesn't say any sign identified as a particular type of thing. I think in there before, it had, with the exception of temporary construction. But since it says any sign, does that not conflict later with where it's saying that it's not required?
Would you like us to insert the word permanent?
Well, I think that might clarify. Just my question, because I thought it said, well, that's any sign, so maybe it should clarify.
Our intent in this paragraph is so that, like when the hospital comes in, the hospital has like a main sign.
Right.
And then they have, like, emergency signs. They have signs in the buildings, so that we get the whole package at one time. We don't get it in little pieces, and, and we can't react to see the whole thing.
Okay. It's just, I thought it was kind of vague.
Yes.
It left some vagueness to the...
I agree. The word, the permanent sign should, any permanent sign.
And that's really all I had. Found one word out of, out of thirty pages. That's, that's interesting.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. I think we all got a letter from the CVBIA that was sent to us, and also we have a copy of it here in front of us. And they are, there's talking about one provision in Section Thirty-One, Seven, One, Four, D, for prohibited signs. If you look at that, and they're taking exception to Four from Section D, which is off-premises signs, which are not located on the same parcel as the activity, use, or business. Have we discussed this with them, Mr. Rose?
Yeah, we have, we have had talk with the, I call it the TBA still.
Right.
And explained this to them. I mean, this is not a change. We don't allow off-premise signs now. This would be like if you had a car dealership that was not on a major road, but you had a friend who had a chicken farm, which is an allowable use, that fronted on fifty-eight, you could not cut a deal with him to allow him to cut you a deal to put a sign down on his chicken farm for your, your car dealership. That's an off-premise sign. It has, it is a developed site, so it has a use attached to it, and has, has a certain amount of square footage that's allowed for that. So it's, that is not a particular change. Their argument is that the only way we can tell that it's an off-premise sign is by content. It's, and it's also by location. It's not on the property associated with that use. So, so we, we are comfortable with the proposal as written. And we believe that based upon the sources that we used that had been run through the legal system prior to us using them as potential sources for, for information, that, that this test would, would be substantiated.
And he understands that?
It's been conveyed to them.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Creekmore. Again, we've had the public hearing. Commissioner Singleton?
It's on page nine of the here for the signs, three vehicular signs. Could you expand on what a vehicular sign is? Is that a Papa John on the top of a van delivering?
Well, I would tell you, if you go out the back door of this building and look towards the voting area, you might see a vehicular sign. Upset. Can I take care of that? Upset.
It's also defined.
Again, commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of ordinance text amendment OTA 2020-001, if that's the correct one. And along with the, just the change to page three, E, adding permanent to that sign.
Page three, E, making that permanent.
Be it any permanent sign.
All right.
Erection of any permanent sign.
Okay. Is that your motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, motion for approval with the one exception added to that. Second to the motion.
I'll second their motion.
All right. Second from Board Member Creekmore. Discussion of the motion. Motion and second for approval with the stipulation stated in the motion. All right, motion and second for approval. Mr. Hanley, call for the vote, please.
Commissioner Benton?
Yes.
Mr. Creekmore? Mr. Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Staler?
Yes.
Chairman, it passes eight to zero.
Thank you, and that will go to City Council on November 18 with the recommendation for approval. That concludes public hearings for this afternoon. I'm not aware of any new business, under the new business, old business. Under the new business, at this time, I turn to Mr. Hanley for a status report of the City Council meeting of October 7, and then a report on preliminary plat approvals.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, on October 7, the City Council met and considered a rezoning request that was previously before this board, which was a conditional approval for Sam's Express Car Wash, RZN 2020-004. This commission had recommended certain items for conditions on there. The City Council added conditions regarding that it be a requirement, that it be a tunnel type car wash, not the, not the bay type, that there be a tenant there onsite during hours of operation, that there be a sign prohibiting loud music, and that there be a pork chop intersection construction at the crossover from the neighborhood, which I will explain allows a left turn in, a right turn in, and a right turn out only out of the facility. And this is the one away from the traffic control light. So with those conditions, they did recommend and did approve, prove the request. There were no preliminary plats approved during the last month.
Thank you for that information. As we move towards adjournment, are there any comments from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just made one. I just say, please, everybody vote. It's coming up here before our next meeting, so just be sure you vote. Thanks, sir.
All right. Thank you for that. Any other comments from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to take this time to thank the commission and also the city staff. I received all your cards, phone calls, and everything through the death of my grandmother, and I just wanted to personally take this time to thank you, so there will be no birthday shout-out today.
Crazy.
Any other comments from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. I appreciate the work that the staff has done on this sign ordinance. I mean, I'm sure it was a lot of time that was, had to be devoted to that, and I think hopefully it is more clear now to the folks that are having to enforce these. And, but I appreciate the, the work that you all did on that.
Yes, sir. We would like to extend that to the great assistance that we got from Halliwell's office, particularly from Carla, on doing all the research and guiding us through, through this landmine that we got with the sign ordinance from the Supreme Court decision.
It owed to those comments.
And I might add to that, some, few years ago, the Committee on Ordinances really fine-tuned the sign ordinance that we had that brought it to the level that did exist before these changes at this time. So I'm probably, would be of the opinion that the sign ordinance has had more participation in, in looking at it as any portion of the ordinances that we have in total. It's, it's been very meticulously worked with. All right. Again, any other comments from the Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to make one more, real quick. Saturday, they had a parade in, in the Hollywood section honoring Mr. David Baker. He's been a great fighter for the community and mentor of mine, and so I just wanted to just give kudos to him for his years of service to the City of Suffolk. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you for your participation. We are now adjourned.